Okay, recording is going.
Okay.
So it's the February 6th, GBOs special meeting regarding Holton Hills resolution. Good to board supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found Alaska statute forty-four dot six-two dot three-one zero and Anchorage Municipal Code one dot two-five public meetings. You go to board supervisors of some good with public meeting standards of conduct. I'll call a meeting to order at five oh three and let's do a roll call and any disclosures. So I will start Mike Edgerton, co-chair and land use supervisor. On my left in the room is.
Guy Wade.
Thank you. And online, let's start with Amanda.
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Jennifer Wingard, Roots and Utilities.
Thank you. And Brianna.
Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor.
Thank you. Does anyone have disclosures? Okay, move on to agenda revisions. So I'd say a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Would like to move it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Guy. Do I hear a second from on the phone?
Also, this is Jennifer.
Thank you. I think everybody did. Okay, I will take this by assent unless I hear otherwise. Do I hear any objections to accepting the agenda? Not hearing any, agenda is accepted. Announcements, the public's encouraged to ask questions, provide comment, please raise your hand physically or virtually and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. So we have one item on the agenda, well, two, we have one item of regular business on the agenda tonight. GBOs resolution regarding Holton Hills. So we had a resolution two twenty-five dash zero one, which we rescinded at our last meeting. We now have a draft resolution in front of us. Would anyone like to move this resolution as presented? Yes, sure.
Do you have any?
No, we don't have any on the list today. No. Sorry, we, no, we don't. Would anyone like to move this, this resolution as presented?
I will, Mike. This is Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can I hear a second?
Second, Brianna.
Thank you, Brianna. So now we can start discussion. Jennifer, since you, since you moved this, would you like to start the discussion?
Um, sure. I want to thank you first of all for a really good start. I think you really provided the basis for this and the, all the groundwork on this, so that through the chair, thank you, that was very helpful. And then I also want to thank other people who have stepped in throughout the last few days here to help, including Kelly and Matt and Margaret and Mike. It's been quite the effort, but that being said, I understand if it's still a work in progress. I would imagine that we particularly have some things to talk about in terms of the therefor's and if we're comfortable with those. There is a whereas that's a little bit lengthy, but it seemed like the best way to do it rather than separating it into other whereases. And I don't know, Mike, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I think we have some, we have some clerical amendments. I know that Brianna suggested we can go through those. Yeah, I think in terms of substance, the one thing I would, the one thing I would point out is we've, since we drafted this, we saw some additional material in the addendum of Friday afternoon for the, for tomorrow's meeting. So there might be some information here, which is, we need to update. Or at least we could respond to the additional information that has been provided. That's the only thing I can think of. Anybody else got any comments or thoughts from the, from the board?
Uh, this is Brianna. I do.
Thank you, Brianna.
Thank you, Mike and Jennifer, for your work on this revised version and all of the details in here. Thank you for doing that over the weekend so quickly. And in effort to make this as clear as we can or as brief as we can, I only have a few suggestions which don't have to be incorporated, but very few of them just take out a word or two and then I could start with them and I think in order is how I have them. Which would, some of them you could take as an amendment or just like a Scrivver edit.
I think what I will ask Margaret, Margaret's, I think, has seen this list of suggested changes by Brianna. Are there any in there which you feel are not just?
I don't have any opinion on any of the small scribblers changes. I think anything involving content though.
Yes.
I have not made any of the changes. So we can run through them.
Okay. Do you have that in front of you, Brianna? Can we just run through those? If you could describe the changes you've suggested.
Yes, and thank you, Margaret. So the second whereas, I suggested putting apostrophe after Girdwood, so it would read Girdwood's housing crisis. But it doesn't add any words there. So it's because we say that we are pleased that they acknowledged the Girdwoods. We own the housing crisis. And then the whereas with prior to and following the signing of the development agreement. Is that the sixth whereas? Yeah, yeah. So in the sixth whereas, which is the lengthy one, that I also hope they don't get lost on that, but I guess it's good to have it on the first page. So in number one, I have instead of leading up to, just write prior to and following the signing of the development agreement. And within that whereas, I suggest that instead of using one and then six numbers, using one and then A through E, maybe letters instead, if, if the board agrees to keep all of them written the way they are. And then on the sixth, the sixth number there, which might be letter E, taking out, there's a lot of parentheses. Oh, no, no. Six, they, yet the legal determination withheld or while the legal determination was not shared, instead of saying the legal determination being kept in secret, just in case that is not received very well from the people that read this. Even though we didn't know until we had to ask and then we were told the legal determination. So I'll repeat that. They say the legal determination withheld or while the legal determination was not shared. And then after the whereas is with the list of resolutions, I looked at it again. I think they're all in chronological order. So the blue bold resolution. And then all that is in chronological order. And then the therefore that says therefore further, there's more parentheses and I, I would just get rid of the parentheses. Or instead of saying, and prior to the issuing of a new RFP, if we want to keep that and then bump it up to a different part of that, therefore further. And the final thing I had was there are two commas after the very last whereas. That is what I have.
And I suggest that the, I think the apostrophe S you mentioned in the second whereas and the commas at the end. And perhaps numbering or using letters instead of numbers in that sixth whereas, I'd consider those kind of Scrivener changes. So we can probably either, unless there's any disagreement, we can probably let that, let those changes happen. But I think the others were in terms of content, so we should probably discuss those individually.
Agreed.
The point about the, I think the first one of those was in the sixth whereas. You suggested a changing in the wording in parentheses about the legal determination.
Right. So just instead of saying in secret two different ways.
Would you have a specific?
Or not? Go ahead.
So did you have a specific change in mind there with that wording?
I would like to move that the amendment would be that six one is. Determination that the two thousand and six Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan satisfied the code requirement for a project-specific area master plan, yet the legal determination was withheld.
Okay. Jennifer, had her hand up, please. Okay. Jennifer, is that a, is this a point of order or is it in response to the motion which Brianna has just suggested?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I was gonna say, yes.
Oh, please, go ahead, Jennifer.
Sorry, Mike, did you wanna, did you wanna, I can wait.
Okay, okay. Yep. So, so what we have is a, so we, I think we, we accept, well, we accepted the, the sort of high level changes. We're now dealing with the, the last part of whereas six, the thing which is currently in parenthesis saying but the legal determination being kept in secret. And Brianna moved that we change that parenthetical phrase to the phrase, I think, the legal. Or is it although the legal determination was withheld? Is that the wording you chose, Brianna?
Yeah, that was one of my suggestions, or was not shared. And it's just a simple suggestion. I have no attachment to my suggestion.
Since we suggested it first, let's use withheld. Okay. And that would be without parentheses, correct?
Correct. There's a lot of parentheses in the resolution.
Right. So I'll repeat these. I'll try and repeat this as I understand it. So the motion is, it has not yet been seconded. That on the sixth whereas, the last part after area master plan, where it currently starts with the parentheses, would be replaced with no parentheses and then although the legal determination was withheld. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
I'll.
Thank you. I think Guy go in there first. So any discussion on that particular amendment? Jennifer, are you?
Yes. Yeah, I just have a couple of quick comments. Thank you, Mike. One is, could I ask for clarification? Is that, my understanding is that legal is still withheld. We still don't have that. Is that correct?
I haven't seen it. I don't know if anything came out today. I haven't been checking today. The last time I looked.
Oh.
It was not. Yes, please go ahead, Brianna.
Okay, my understanding when I read that was, that was the meeting where Ryan Yell told us that it was still being honored. So that's why I thought that was the legal determination, although he's not, I guess, legal determination. Okay, maybe I'm confused if we haven't been officially told. So.
I think we, we've been told by planning that there was a legal determination. However, we have not seen the justification for it. We've not seen the reasons for it. So I think that's, that's why it works saying though the legal determination was withheld. The outcome has been, we've been informed of what the outcome of that was, but we have not been informed of the justification. We have requested it. Yes, I think to answer your earlier question, Jennifer, I do not see any, any, I have not seen anything added to the agenda or any more information which which indicates that there is a, that we, that the legal determination or justification has been shared.
Okay, I just want to thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. I think we could also say remains withheld, but I think was withheld keeps it relevant if that does manage to change. And I just, I had one other question and Mike, I don't know if this is the right time for it or not. I'm not sure if I understood the clerical aspect of having a number one followed by a whole bunch of letters, but I can also ask that of Margaret. I don't think that that is germane to the essence of this letter. So I kind of wanted to throw it out there, but I don't want to get hung up on.
Okay, let's, so we can, we can touch on that after we deal with the, this, this particular amendment. So we have, we have in front of us this amendment. Any more discussion on this amendment? So this is changing the but the legal determination being kept in secret to whether legal determination was withheld. Any more discussion of that point from the board? Any comments on that specific point from the audience? S C Kelly has her hand up.
Yeah, just that, um, just that Suzanne, I spoke with her about this legal determination and she said that it's been shared with the assembly and they were instructed that it couldn't be shared with the public. So there is a legal interpretation. And, and so that's, it's just, and, and I don't think they will share it because they've been instructed that it can't be shared.
Okay, so we haven't seen it, so. Thank you. Any more comments? Please go ahead.
Seth, go in through the chair.
Yeah, if you could just speak to the microphone here.
I think secret shows conspiratorial.
Yes.
And I think withheld slightly less conspiratorial and not shared is less judgmental. That's all I'm throwing out there.
Okay.
But without publicly release.
Yeah, we can, that's a fair suggestion as well. What we have in front of us is was withheld. So we can amend the amendment if anyone wishes to do so.
I agree. That was one thing I didn't really like was the, yeah, the conspiratorial aspect of it. So changing it to withheld.
Withheld still allows you to be conspiratorial, but doesn't force us to be conspiratorial. Okay. I'll call for a vote on this amendment.
Sure. Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Amendment passes five zero.
Thank you. So we're back to the, we're back to the resolution as it stands. It was, so I just want to go back to.
Jen, did you vote no?
No, I voted yes.
Yes.
Yep. I think that was the only. Am I correct, Brianna, if that was the only content?
Yes.
Issue.
That was the only content one. And then to jump back to the, the six whereas that's long, I, since I saw two ones in a row, that's why I suggested letters, but maybe it should be one through seven. But, but the first one's like prefacing all the reasons, so. That's why I said that.
Right. I remember, I remember a version of this draft, but I can't remember whether I put the letters in or numbers in or something else. Do, do you remember, Jennifer? Is, does this, the two ones is definitely confusing. How should we change this?
But you know what? I think, I, I think that's my goof up. Um, I think we need to get rid of that first one altogether and move the colon, yeah, the, just get rid of that colon in the first one and then the whole thing should read more smoothly.
Okay, so we, so if I understood you, can you make that in form of the motion?
Yes, well, sure. So I make a, a move to delete the first one and it will read as questions remain unanswered by H L B about the process leading up to and following the signing of the development agreement, including colon, number one, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'll second that with it reading the process prior to. Thank you.
Right, sorry. Absolutely, Brianna, yes.
Okay. That's the two changes. Right. Any other discussion, any discussion on that from the board? None, let's move to a vote.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade? Amanda Sassy? Amanda Sassy?
Yes, sorry.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Our motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Um, any other comment suggestions or potential amendments to the resolution from anybody?
Possibly some from the authors?
Yes.
In that same whereas, number four, did you mean to put that where it was? It seems like chronologically that's kind of the beginning, so it was a change to develop partners and work. You considered putting it where you did for a reason. Wanted to change that, you know, it's the first thing after the RFP was awarded, the change in development partners.
Um, when I created the first version of this, I think the intent was to go through financial issues first and keep them together and then some of the other process issues and, and some rules about outside into other plans. So, and then we went into a bit more detail about the finances. So that's why it became more. So, I mean, if you want to change the order, that's fine, but they.
As long as you guys stop doing that or do that, I mean, I.
Yeah, it's kind of a merger of property, but yes, that's it, it's not, it's not a, it is there for a reason, that order.
Another question, I guess, just the title of it itself. In the last version, we had, you know, kind of went straight into post open of, you know, what, what we were looking for. When you're making a resolution, can you not make a resolution to the negative? Or did you want to make a resolution recommending the assembly go no disposal?
You can, when it says that, when you're making a motion in the positive, rejection is a positive action. It's voting no on something that you, you can say, we want a rejection of. So I mean, so I think what you're saying is resolution recommending instead of assembly action, we say assembly rejection of the disposal, for example. I think that's a fair question. That's a fair, fair suggestion. Jay, do you want to make that as a, as a motion?
Sure. So maybe reword that title of it to the resolution, recommending the assembly reject the land disposal heritage land bank parcels known as Holton Hills described in A O. Twenty ten, one three, yes.
Rejection of.
Rejection of.
Do you have a second?
I'll second. This is Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion on this? I'm not seeing any, so let's move to a vote.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
I did not, I don't know what we're voting on, so I'm abstaining.
Okay. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Can, can I suggest a revote and I will
Yes.
state what we are doing here.
She got disconnected and came back in the middle.
Yes, yes, so. Okay, so sorry, sorry, Amanda. I should have repeated it again when I saw you got disconnected. So the motion which was proposed, oh, sorry, the amendment which was proposed by Guy and seconded by Jennifer is to change the title from resolution recommending assembly action on the land disposal to resolution recommending assembly rejection of. So the words action on become rejection of. And then it's an accurate description of what the ask actually is. Clear?
Thank you.
Can we just revote?
Sure.
Just procedural purposes.
Yep. Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yeah.
And the amendment passes five zero.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Any other comment suggestions, thoughts, possible amendments? Okay. I, I have two, so I don't know who wants to take chair temporarily. Do you want to take chair, Brianna?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Do you have an amendment?
Thank you. I do. One of them's kind of a by technical one. It's really in the title of, since the platting action, these are no longer really the parcels that are being that are being disposed of. And I'm quite sure the best way to maybe it's just part of land disposal, including parts of, I'm just trying to find the phrase that's actually used now in the, you know, portions of, that's it. So we can insert the phrase portions of heritage land bank in the title and then the same in the the same in the therefore.
The final therefore?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yes, sure. I'll read, I'll read the title.
And Guy, like clarification?
Yeah, just now.
Mike, go ahead.
I will reread the title as it would be we pass this amendment. So resolution recommending assembly rejection of the land disposal of portions of Heritage Land Bank parcels six, zero eleven, six, one, six, et cetera. So it's just putting the portions of thing in before Heritage Land Bank. That's the way it's described in the, in the A O titles. And then the same thing would occur in the, in the second therefore.
Prior to heritage, the word heritage.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any discussion? Hands?
Jennifer, hands up.
I cannot see hands. Okay, Jennifer, please go ahead.
Um, this is a clarification question, maybe for Mike. I'm curious if we, if we need that. Would, would it still make sense if we, if it read as? Sorry. Let me go to my copy of it. Of the Heritage Land Bank parcels known as Holton Hills as described in A O, et cetera. We could skip portions of and the parcel numbers with that. I mean, it's clear what we're talking about anyway. Maybe I just wanted to know your thoughts about that.
I think that's a, that's another fair suggestion. The only reason I suggested that first formulation is that's what, that's what appears in the, in the A O now. So we would be doing something a bit different, but that's fine. I think they're both, they both just clean up it, clean it up a little bit, but they're not hugely critical. I think either is okay. So if you, if you don't like the one I suggested, then we could change it. I think either is acceptable.
I was just trying to streamline it. I wasn't disagreeing with what you said. I just thought maybe in the interest of streamlining, the meaning would still be clear, but I'll be open to other people's suggestion.
So I think it's not, it, it just follows the same language as the A O. So it makes it a little bit cleaner that it's, it's just tied directly to that. That's the only, that's the only reason I would suggest my terminology rather than yours, but I think they both get to the same point.
Okay.
No worries.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Mike. Are there any other hands, Kyle?
Uh, no. With the board, there's no more hands. We do have a public hand. Kelly's.
Okay, public hands. Please say your name and make your comment.
Kelly Ogden, and just a request that we leave portions of out of the therefore at the end, because I think actually the area master plan for those three tracks in entirety should be completed. And so I think, I think we don't want to just do an area master plan for portions of considering there's an active RFP response for more than the disposal.
Oh. I'm going to propose as a, I'm going to change my amendment to include that. So we would just change the title if the second agrees.
Okay, does the second agree?
Was that the second? Yeah. Yes. Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the board? So Kyle, I'll ask for a roll call for the amendment for the title. So Kyle, I'll ask for a roll call for the amendment for the title.
Okay. Uh, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yeah.
The amendment passes five zero.
Thank you, Kyle. Uh, Mike, do you have any further?
Um, yeah, let's just jump onto the therefores now. Um, so the first therefore, um therefore GBO searches assembly members to reject the Hilton Hills land disposal. I'm happy with that. The the last bit's kind of confusing because the the vote no on AO twenty twenty two one oh three S, because we don't actually know which version is going to be in front of them. Um, so we could just say vote no on any existing version or any current version of AO twenty twenty two one oh three. Um, or any published versions, or we could just leave it as the rejection of the Hilton Hills land disposal. Um, I don't think we want to be specific on one that they're probably not going to be voting on at all. So I would put so my concrete proposal would be to just go up to the word disposal and then remove the rest of the the rest of the therefore.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jennifer. And discussions from the board? Go ahead.
I'll just repeat that again. So we'll say it slightly different way. So I think we, by being too specific, we actually there's kind of some wiggle room. And if we're if we just say reject the whole hills land disposal, you know, we could have as currently proposed or something, but I would just leave it reject the whole hills land disposal and have it there. I think that makes our point just as well without any wiggling.
Brianna, Jennifer has her hand up.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you, Brianna, and thank you, Mike. I think that's a great suggestion. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. I agree with this suggestion. Thanks, Kyle. Because that for the same reason stated. Uh, if there are no other hands, Kyle, I'll call after we're a roll call.
Yeah, uh, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Uh, amendment passes five zero.
Great, thanks, Kyle. Anything else, Mike?
Yeah, second therefore. Um, so I've got kind of a a particular problem with this, which is the the in conjunction with bit. Because I do not think that we want the comprehensive plan does a very different job and is not shouldn't be tied to um, any request for an area master plan in that area. Um. That's my narrow point. So I don't like the the in conjunction with at all and oppose that. I think my broader point is that the revised area master plan should be something that's done anyway, and it's somewhat independent of our primary ask here. So if the um if we don't get a rejection of the whole hills land disposal, then I think that's the appropriate time to uh argue that there needs to be a proper um area master plan for that area. Um, I don't think tying the two things together necessarily helps our case. Um, and I definitely do not believe it should be tied at all to the comprehensive plan. I think they're very independent things and separate things. Though I I think I would suggest that we just strike the therefore further. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Any seconds out there?
Second to Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, any discussion?
Um, I'll try and rephrase that in this in a clearer way. So um, what we're kind of doing in that second thing is um talking about a potentially different things depending on what the outcome of this action is tomorrow. So we might be talking about, I mean, let's just do the first part, the area master plan um be completed. So we might be asking about doing that within the within um a whole hills when whole hills disposal has already been approved. And then we're asking for an area master plan, a sort of planning activity for that particular development. Um. If the whole hills disposal isn't approved, then we're asking for an area master plan for a development that doesn't for a potential future development, but nothing that has a real proposal. They're kind of already different things. Um, and then the other thing, as I said, is it should not. I don't believe it should be tied away at at all. It should be shouldn't be tied. It's to it shouldn't be tied to the comprehensive plan other than the fact that any comprehensive plan sort of would override an area master plan if it's completed first and doesn't agree with the comprehensive plan. So there's kind of like a race condition, for want of a better term. There's uh two different things potentially going on here. And depending which one gets there first could potentially change the other in some ways. So I think this is just a this is kind of a very complex ask and could have lots of consequences. And we don't know what the context will be yet. We probably will in a week or two, and I think that's the right time to make this request. So we've read on this. Yeah, okay, that's 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 basically it.
Brianna, Amanda's hands up.
Okay, Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you. I can see your point, Mike, and I think the these and prior to the issuing of a new RFP was maybe a real point of this therefore, because we I don't think many people in the want the RFP to go out again before the is completed uh so that we don't run into this similar issue of fighting against old plans uh while weaving on new ones. Uh, and that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jennifer, can I respond to Amanda's point?
Sure, yeah.
First and then.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's a completely fair point. I agree. I'm just thinking, I just think this would be better done as a separate action rather than as part of this action. When we have some clarity over what the assembly does tomorrow on the whole hills project itself.
Thank you, Amanda, and thank you, Mike. Uh, Jennifer, go ahead.
Um, I think those are all good points. I wanted to address a little bit about why it might uh belong there. And and I think it has importance, not just as an ask, but as a statement about um, some of the the two leading criticisms that we seem to be hearing about the community viewpoint on this. One is this uh completely inaccurate, in my opinion, blanking the Girdwood opposition to this is NIMBY. Um, and the other is the argument that we're not looking for a path forward. And so that, you know, this to me, the reason for this therefore is partly connected to showing that we're not anti-development. We do have an idea for a plan forward. And that this is about, you know, moving on. Let's move on from this. So this ask is uh is an ask, but it's also a statement. Uh, and that would be my argument for leaving it in.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer.
You know, I I agree with you, Jennifer, that um you know, we we've said this several times. Um, that this, you know, nothing should happen until we do get these plans out and we can plan properly. So um, but I do see where it kind of muddies the water of our 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 big ask. Um. I think we talked during our last meeting though, and um that we don't want to sound like NIMBYs and we don't want this to, you know, I don't think the whole committee wants this to go away. I just think we want it to drive. And so um you know, I don't know if you want to put it in the first whereas, but I do like the um I do like the thought and um maybe it, I mean, not the first whereas, in the first therefore, maybe it needs to be moved into whereas, but um I do like inserting that thought into the assembly's mind that we aren't saying no, we're saying this just needs to be done right. I don't know exactly how to do that, but just mixing that that whole thing, particularly that last, you know, part in parentheses. They carried along the way, and I think that's what a lot of people would like to see.
Brianna, you have Amanda's hand up and then Jennifer.
Okay, thank you, Guy. Thanks, Kyle. So Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, maybe it, like Guy was saying, it could be turned into a whereas something like whereas the community is interested in reissuing the RFP after the Girdwood is completed, something to that effect.
Thanks, Amanda. Uh, response to Amanda, anyone? And if not, Jennifer can go ahead.
Thank you, Brianna. Um, I I should have mentioned one other possibility, or sorry, one other uh motivation for putting this in was that it's a response to the community input. So as uh, we all know, particularly at the second assembly listening session, and then again at the joint GBOS and LUC sessions, we heard a lot from the community about wanting to make sure that these plans are done. And it boils down to this idea that we need the plans to lead development and not development leading plans, which seems to be the way that HLB is going about this right now. Uh, if we do need to ditch the part about the Girdwood comprehensive plan to keep it clear, you know, I'd be open to that, but uh, I would still argue for this, keeping the second therefore uh not as a whereas uh just again to reflect what the community ask has been. It has been no, and we need plans before we have development.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, just looking to the four top wherestes. If we could insert what you just said, the final statement you said could somehow be more powerful perhaps than muddying it like Guy mentioned, not to use his term, but um, it does come across as a little bit of a confusing uh ending if they read to the bottom. I, anyone else had their hand up? Sorry, I interrupted.
We have no more board members, but we have two two publics, uh, first with Kelly and then David.
Okay. If if no one popped their hand up on the board, then uh we'll go with Kelly.
Yeah, I think um I had a fairly concerning conversation with Brian, you know, their acres planning the other day. And basically, because the legal decision to effectuate the area master plan indefinitely has been determined, even for Palmeroy to come do an aliasca village, which you would think, oh, it's so far out of alignment with the two thousand and six plan that would definitely drive a plan. The comment was made, since there is a plan, that that plan could be used because it like the only requirement of code is that a plan exists. And so, for example, planning could say, yeah, sure, you could permit this. It should be noted, it's not in agreement with the plan, but like, yeah, no big deal, nothing to see here. So so actually, like, I think it it actually is a fairly critical part of the ask to say we do want to develop this area and we want to do it in a way that the plan leads the development, not the plan is completely bypassed in the development, because the area master plan is also where traffic studies are done, fire impact studies are done, school studies are done. All the impacts of of doubling the size of Girdwood are done through the area master plan, and and there's no way what's done in two thousand and six could accurately represent, you know, twenty twenty three. So I do think it's an important part to keep in the formal ask um in a powerful way, because otherwise it would appear that it might never get updated. Even if all four hundred and fifty acres get developed over the next five to 10 years, it'll still be based on the two thousand and six plan that doesn't mention, could still be based on the two thousand and six plan that doesn't mention any of the proposals out there. Um. So yeah, I think a lot of what happens in Holden Hills is important for the precedent effects for HMB landing Girdwood. And that that makes this an important element.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, David?
Yeah, thank you. Well, uh, here's my dumb question of the day. Um, so I understand the area, Matt, the uh the uh Girdwood comprehensive plan, we also refer as as the Girdwood area plan. For now, we're trying to from last communication uh talk about it as the Girdwood comprehensive plan. And is is the area master plan, is that the is that referring to the uh Holton Hill? I mean, excuse me, the Crow Creek uh land use plan, or is that a completely different plan that I'm not aware of? Thank you.
Brianna, can I try and answer this?
Yes, please.
It the language is really confusing here. So there's a set of comprehensive plans across the whole of the municipality, and all of them have the word comprehensive in them except for Girdwood. And Girdwood is called the Girdwood area plan. So there's a there's a Chugakikul River comprehensive plan. There's a Ternikin Arm comprehensive plan. There's a Anchorage Bowl comprehensive plan. And then there's a Girdwood area plan, but it actually is a comprehensive plan. Um. An area master plan is something which does follow the development, and it's for a specific development. Um, and that's required in code. The neighborhood land use plan is kind of a neighborhood plan, which sits between a comprehensive and a specific project. Um, and the argument that um has been made by the administration is that although the area master plan is required in code, the neighborhood plan performs that function. So we're kind of not being very careful with the way we ask with where we ask these different languages. So an an area master plan would follow a development. A neighborhood plan would lead a development. So um, just in this, there's a there's quite a bit of complexity, and I'm not sure we can squeeze it all into a single therefore. But what I'm, so what we have from what we're currently discussing is removing the whole thing. I think we could probably put something back in after we remove this. Um, so I'm going to call for a vote if that's okay.
Thank you, Mike. Um. Kyle, could you do a roll call vote for the motion to remove the final therefore?
Yes, uh, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
No.
Amanda Sassy?
Can you come back to me? I'm sorry.
Jen- Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero uh three two.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Thank you, everyone. Uh, do we have more amendments from Mike or?
I'm gonna, because that one passed, I'm going to propose something else that we do that we add in. Um, so and I haven't quite got this right in my mind, but I think several really good points were made in that discussion. Um, and maybe what we need to do is add in a therefore further um GBO request that any future development um in the whole, you know, across this land or HLB land um has a specific area master, has an area master plan specific to that development provided, produced or completed, whatever the words is. So I think what we're saying there is we want things to go through the area master plan um process, not just have some other document from the past, you know, be be act as if it was an area master plan, because they clearly perform different functions. So I'm gonna I'm gonna try and come up with some words for this. Um, so therefore further, uh, GBO requests that any future development um of these HLB lands um include a specific area master plan is completed for those projects.
Can I add the end of that?
Yeah.
Or suggest um uh prior to RFP?
Yep.
You accept that?
I will second if he accepts.
Okay, I think he said yes, and that was your second, Amanda? Do we have a second for a new therefore further? And if uh the staff or anyone in the room wants to say it again, but we might have a discussion now. So any discussion?
Guy's got a.
And okay, and I agree with everyone so far that there are great point made in the previous discussion. So including some language like this would be prudent. Guy, go ahead.
No, I can second the same with that discussion.
We have a second, yep, so.
Then I know.
Okay, Sky.
I think um, I, I do like that. It keeps it in there and I think to keep in the RFP, you know, maybe. I think what she originally said was. To. Something about development and maybe we should change development to disposal. So they don't dispose of this land, um, because development will come after that, uh, possibly, and um, you know, possibly suspend. Future disposal until. The issues that a new group of comprehensive plan or master plan, but. That might be.
Second.
Other, other, but it just seems like. We don't want to dispose of this land before we, uh, before our new plan is put out there.
Thank you, Guy. And just for clarification, um, with Amanda's suggested issuing an RFP. RFP happens before disposal, so we're just being really specific if we add in that. Any other discussions on the board?
I think, again, I think what we, we're confusing a few different things in this discussion, so um. I think we need to just think about what we're doing a little bit. So an area master plan would be a project specific thing. And somebody's gonna have to spend money on that, maybe HLB, in which case it could be done prior to a, um, an RFP, but then we're asking HLB or the landowner to do, to, to, to do that work first. Uh, the other, the other way is we can require that um. If there isn't a, um, an area master plan that HLB, so there has to be an area master plan for any, before any development can happen, so. That could be done after a disposal, but it'd be conditional on the disposal, so the can do, disposal can only complete if that's completed. And then, again, the, the thing about an RFP is it's kind of when this is done relative to when people, different people own the land and when the disposal is done. And that's kind of one of the things underneath Holden Hills that's made this whole thing very complex. But HLB wanted to sort of get a disposal done before some of the other planning things happen. So I, I've got it. It's a slight revision of language here, so therefore further, GBOS requests that any future disposal of these HLB lands. Requires a project specific area master plan to be completed before development commences.
Thanks, Mike. Any other hands?
Jennifer's hand is up.
Uh, yeah, just for starters, Mike, would, I'm sorry, would you mind reading that one more time?
Yeah, so um. Therefore further, GBOS requests that any future disposal of these HLB lands. Requires a project specific area master plan to be completed before development commences. Or before any development commences, I suppose. So that covers either it's done before a disposal or it's done as a condition of a disposal.
And can I, sorry, could I ask one other question about that? Do we need to clarify that it's for the, uh, two, actually, two questions about that. So it says these HLB lands, so. We're specifically referring to these three parcels. This is not gonna affect squirrel cages or Holt, um, sorry, industrial park or anything else. This is specific to Holden Hills, correct?
Yes. Uh, well, specific to Holden Hills or the Palmeroy development on the other side, it's this, this section of land.
Okay, right, so, so I did want to make sure that it's understood be inclusive of the Palmeroy sections as well.
It should be, yeah. Maybe that's not clear by using the word these.
Well, if we have it these three parcels.
Yeah.
Or, uh, or these Holden Hills lands. I mean, I'm not sure, but I, I just want to make sure that it includes all three. Tracks in whatever form, right? However squirrely we need to get about it.
We have that in the title, although we do have a portion of as well. I, I would leave it as these and then uh, fight about the specifics later.
Uh, okay, through the check, can I just say one other thing? Um, I just, I just wanted to appreciate uh, uh, both Guy and Mike for you, the thoughts on this. Um, I think it's uh. Super helpful coming at different angles, but um, I'm, I am pleased with the idea of getting, being able to get this second therefore in there somehow or another.
Brianna, Amanda's hand's up.
Okay, Jen, um, Amanda, please go.
Thank you. Um, I, I guess I am concerned that um, if the, I'm just worried that the. It will happen again that someone will apply for the RFP and no area plan is done. And then the community comes out to say, this is, your plan is not what we want. And then we get another conundrum. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Uh, we have several public hands, uh, Brianna, who, let's see, there's more comments on the board.
Okay.
We'll start.
Mike, do you have a response to that, or I'll go with comment from the public?
Uh, I've got a brief response to Amanda. I think that, I think we um, we're not going to be able to preempt everything that happens in the future. Um, I think we're making, we're making a statement that there should be a specific plan, um, an area master plan. I guess or equivalent, but we're making a statement, there should be a specific area master plan for any development in this area, in this particular area in the future, not rely on something from the past. Um, there are probably other things we're gonna have to respond to in future development proposals as well. Uh, I'd just like to say, I also said that language, uh, to you directly, Margaret. Okay.
Thanks, Mike. I have a question for staff. Do we need a motion to extend?
No.
Okay, I'll go with the public from the.
Okay, I'll start with Matt. Matt, just your hand up.
Yeah, I was just there. Matt Tractor, um, I was just asking that, that therefore you're working on whether you can ask the assembly to direct the HLB. To basically, just like you're urging your system, we to vote no. I don't know whether you can ask the assembly to direct the HLB to. Do its business properly.
Does anyone want to respond to the public question?
Well, I, I agree. I, I, I think it's a good question. I don't know.
Right.
Um, I noticed that in, in the resolution which is uh, being proposed tomorrow. About our balance in Girdwood being as affordable and attainable housing, it, it, it requests, it does not direct.
Right.
I think there is a limit as to how the assembly can direct the, the administration. So I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I hear it.
Okay, uh, Kelly?
Thank you.
I think that's actually a really important point, and I think we should say, because this is a resolution to the assembly, and so we want them to request. Direct whatever the HLB to do it, because Title 21 is specific that the landowner has to be the person that starts it. HLB has to be the initiator of an update to this plan. Again, that's what I called Ryan to clarify, because I wanted to understand. I think it's important that we actually communicate that we want this plan as the next step, like now, like this year, because. That's what the, the 2006 plan did, was it stepped back and said, hey, we'd like to develop this plan someday. Let's step back and design how we want it to be done. And I think if we can get a no vote and then roll street in to start planning that area, that's the collaborative. All the developers who have an idea of what they want to do, whether it's a village, whether it's a neighborhood. Everybody comes to the table and that's what the area master plan is. It's like, here's 450 acres. Let's design as a community the specific way we want to use it. And I'm not advocating to put the language back in, but that's the idea of it being done in, in conjunction with the area plan, because the area plan's. Two, 20,000 feet or the comprehensive plan is 20,000 feet, and then this is saying, okay, but for these 450 acres, here's how we want them to look. And so I do think it's important that like, we roll straight out of a no vote and straight into by municipal standards. Um, but like, straight into planning that area to keep the momentum and um. And so that like, no RFPs, no bids, no development, if none of that happens, the next thing that happens is we plan. How to use the 450 acres collaboratively. And, and then the outcome, you know, depending on which process you use in HLB could, could form a bid process or another RFP. Um, but that plan would dictate, basically, we go out on the street and we're like, who wants to come build this? We got, you know, and it, it's gonna be parts of it, but. But that's kind of um, where I see the real value in, in keeping the momentum of the no rolling into action. And then that puts Girdwood back in the driver's seat in collaboration with developers and HLB to design that land.
What's your name then?
Seth Colley.
Uh, Brianna, we have Seth.
Hey, thank you, Seth.
One of the things I think is, is the second bit, like, it's very important, and simplicity in this language. And thinking of it in terms of a one-two punch, right? Get to one, now two, like. Jen was saying, we're not miming, we want to move forward, but I might suggest. Uh, GBOS requests that an AMP be revised in current parentheses within three years. Be completed prior to any HLB disposal in the Girdwood Valley and prior to issuing of a new RFP. Consideration for disposal, or what, something like that, any, so in, in the future. You're, you're saying, don't do this, and you say, uh, we consider a three-year, put an R in there, five-year to be current. And by doing that, you're, you're telling them, look, we need it revised, and in the future, we'll use this one unless it's five years, three years from now, whatever you consider it to be. And that all HLB lands that are considered for disposal would, would follow. Sorry.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you, everyone. Any other?
Kelly's hand's back up.
Yeah, Title 21 says that an area master plan is basically effective indefinitely unless it's formally abandoned. So another ask we could do is to abandon, to end this 2006 plan, which then forces. Any development to come in and do a new one, because it would no longer be present. Um, so that's another mechanism by which we could say, you know, abandon the, you know, you know, whatever, abandon the 2006 plan. And require completion of a new plan prior to any further consideration, prior to any consideration for disposal or something. Um, anyways, it's just another mechanism that could serve our purpose.
Okay.
And is more binding, somebody coming in later, they couldn't bypass it anymore if this one got abandoned.
Thank you for those comments. And I, earlier, when we were getting pretty deep into this, it does sound like we have, or GBOS will have another. Um, potential. Project to start or resolution, if we want to keep this. Concise and focused on. What they're potentially voting on tomorrow. So if there are another hands, Kyle, uh, or comments from the board?
No more.
Okay, I'd like to call for a vote on the suggested language that was read.
Therefore further. Do you want me to repeat that, Brianna?
Yeah, please.
The language I have here is therefore further, GBOS requests that any future disposal of these HLB lands. Requires a project specific area master plan completed before any development commences. And this shouldn't be our final word on it. This is just for this document.
Right. Okay, Kyle, when you're ready.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Um, Jennifer.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Uh, Gus, Gus, sorry. Brianna Sullivan?
Me, yes.
All right, motion amendment passes five, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. All right.
Don't take your shirt back now. I haven't got any more.
Bear back. All right, Mike, it's all yours.
Thank you. I don't have any more amendments, so then, um, we're back to the, we're back to the motion itself. We have this document with various changes. Does anybody else have any amendments to make on the board? Yeah, well, we're gonna move, once we've just finished the amendments, they can move to the.
Put the language up there now that Margaret has it and it's in, just to like.
You email it to me.
Yeah.
This is the meaning, sorry.
Answer to you as well. Sorry, I sent it to Margaret. I sent it to Kyle. Language of the last therefore. Um, okay, so are there any, now we're back on the main, um.
I have a question.
Yes, sure.
Um, it has been suggested in the editing process that you want all the supervisors to sign this, so perhaps you can make that decision while Kyle's pulling this up.
Thought I was gonna ask this, if we, if there's any other comments on the, on the resolution as a whole. Um, there don't appear to be any more amendments, so does any, anyone on the board have any comments on the resolution overall as it stands? Before we vote on that. Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you all for your hard work and this is a really good job.
Thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll stop in that, I guess. Thanks to everyone who's worked on this and the project overall. It's been a long journey. Um, I hope they're close to the end. Um, I think this is a very clear statement of what we've done so far, what we tried, what's failed, and where we now are as a, at least as a board. And hopefully in the community in general. Um, I'm not seeing any more comments. Any comments from the, um, from the community on the resolution as a whole? Start with Karen.
Oh, just, I'll echo the, the thanks for, for recommitting and giving it. It was more just a question if there's any update on. On what we can anticipate for tomorrow in terms of, um, do we think they're gonna vote, or I don't know if this is the form we're led to ask that, but I didn't know if there's anything you know that you could share.
I'm happy to make some comments after we've dealt with this item.
Okay, perfect.
At least what I know. Uh, Betty?
Just to point out the language, I'm really long, two, three, four, five, six, six, whereas. That after each one of the numbered items, there could be a comma, and then, um, take on the extra and, that's right, we call it number three.
Sounds like, I'd say a comment, but so. I think that would again be counted as. It doesn't change the meaning completely. Okay, uh, any other comments? If not, let's uh, move to a vote.
Okay, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade? Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion as amended passes.
Thank you, everybody. Um, let's touch on the question that, uh, um, Margaret mentioned as well. Uh, we need this, uh, this to be finalized in sent to the, um, Assembly Clark, or the municipal clerk, sorry. Probably early tomorrow, at least by the late morning. I think it, it would be good if as many of us are able to sign it, do sign it. Um, if people are in agreement with that, so, um, does anyone want to sign this document? It's a resolution. Not hearing any. Amanda?
I, I'm just raising my hand as I, I would sign it, um, and I can come by. So.
Okay, so we, we, this would need to be done by, let's say, noon tomorrow. Is that, does that work for everybody? I think most of us have electronic signatures available. But anyone who doesn't would need to do it physically. So, okay, um. I think that's it. So we've finished that item. I'm happy to. Make, make a, just a, a comment on what I understand is happening tomorrow. So, um. And that, when the item about the Holden Hill disposal comes up. It to be a, um, a move to postpone it indefinitely, which not to say was no vote. It means basically it just will not get dealt with, so it pushes it, it effectively kills the, uh, kills the proposal. That would require, I believe, seven votes to pass. If that does pass. Um, if that does pass, then it's done, as is. Uh, they could come back in the future with another proposal, but it stops at least that um, that as is. Um, if that doesn't succeed, then I would not be surprised if there's, if somebody asks to reopen public hearing, which probably would be a later meeting, so that would be a postponement for a shorter period of time. Maybe one meeting. I think there is a way in which public hearing can be opened in the same meeting. I don't understand those rules. So I don't know if it's guaranteed to be a delay, but there will probably be a a vote to open public hearing. I don't know if that will pass or fail. Um, and then I'm sure there are a lot of amendments. Uh, if it does keep going ahead, there'll be amendments, there'll be a vote overall. But for a vote overall, there need to be seven votes in the positive for it to pass. You know, however many people are there, I believe it's the majority of the assembly, so it needs seven votes to pass. So if seven people don't vote for it in affirmative, the ordinance would not pass. My expectation is there'll be an attempt to push it, to either postpone it forever or postpone it for a short period of time, and I just don't know whether that's gonna be successful or not. Hopefully, we'll find out tomorrow.
You know, the secondary uh discussions of GBOS and a nonprofit will be voted on prior to or after?
I believe that's a, is a resolution. It would be beforehand, I believe, yeah. I think that's on the consent agenda.
Right now, it is, it should be five.
Yes, that would be, that's in section ten, so that would happen beforehand typically. Because that's on the consent agenda, so it may not even be discussed. It might just be passed without any discussion. I expect there will be a discussion. Okay, um, we will move on to public comment. Persons offering public comment for stateful name and address. Public comments limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Well, just go ahead.
Just want to say thank you for everybody's work. Thank you. Here, here.
Okay. Um, Crystal?
Uh, again, thank you for everybody for your work. Um, and I hope that they listen to the resolution that you guys just passed and also I am excited about the resolution that they're putting forward in regards to um identifying lands um for attainable housing. I think this is the right direction to be headed for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? If not, it will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, Guy.
Second.
Thank you. I hear a second. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mike.